We do spend, it does increase our aid. You know, as we increase spending, our aid in the following year increases. So there's no danger. If you're, if you're in a different tier of the aid formula, the more money you spend, you actually take it, you take less aid in the following year. And so we're not in that category. Fight that. So we have the ability to be creative.
All right. Thanks for next place to Kevin.
All right, we'll continue that conversation. I'll wait just saying the thing.
Yeah, I heard, I heard the echo, but it sounded like it was behind me. And I'm like, ain't nothing behind me but a wall. I'm like, man.
I'm a twilliquism act. Um, other two other items, uh, real briefly, uh, just as a reminder to you that, um, we pay our bond payments, uh, for all of our Fund 39 debt twice a year. Once March, and we pay some in March, that's the big bill, and then some in September. Uh, our March payments are coming up, so we just transferred today two and a half million dollars, uh, from our basic account to, uh, our Fund 39 account. And all the payments are ready to go on March. Some are March 1st, there's a couple that are on March 15th. Uh, once we make those payments, two of our debts will disappear. These are the final principal payments for those. Um, and so when you see the budget document next year, you'll see two less, um, items in there. And then tied to that, uh, we'll have an upcoming conversation about debt defeasement. Um, as you remember, last year you, or last fall, you approved a million dollar over levy in Fund 39. So we'll have the conversation with Baird to discuss how that will work and what the other costs will be for that and how much we'll actually be able to pay down and what the interest savings will be. Um, we're going to delay the conversation just a little bit because they wanted to meet this month, but, um, our tax revenue, because our tax levy was lower this year than it was last year. Um, and we receive our tax payments on the normal schedule as Village pays it out. Um, we receive a percentage of, whatever percentage of the tax levy that people pay. So we're, we're down, um, in the amount of the levy that we've received thus far. We only had the one payment, which was on January 15th. We'll get, we should have money deposited tomorrow. Um, so at this, at this exact moment, I don't have enough to pay the million dollars, but that will come either next month or, uh, April is our next period. So once we know when that money will be here, we can start planning for that defeasement piece and we'll have a better, better schedule. We won't be doing it, uh, this month, but I'll probably bring them to you in March and then we'll plan on what, we'll prove that. Any questions about, uh, the bond payments and the defeasement and all? Anything else financially?
I do have a question, um, not related to what you reported on. Thank you for that, but help my, help my mind here. Have we had an actual to budget in all this year?
Not yet. Um, we actually just, uh, uh, we will be seeing that, uh, this month. Uh, part of it is it's always delayed because I have to get the budget into Skyward in order for you to see numbers with the budget. And, uh, we were just, uh, dealing with some, um, with the bank rate reconciliation, making sure all the revenue was starting to show up as well. So we will, you'll see your first treasure report, uh, this month.
Wonderful.
Which will be for January.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, uh, again, if you didn't, if you're not online right now, you don't know this page two, or if you don't have the page two, I will turn it over to, uh, Mr. Russ regarding, um, some of the, uh, other pieces. Okay, let me do, I'll do one piece here. Yeah, I'll mention the Raptor piece, uh, just because, uh, Matt and Kara and I have all been pretty heavily involved in that, but we did, we did go through a training with staff on, uh, last Friday. So the Raptor, uh, application, which, uh, you all are familiar with from a visitor management standpoint, that's the, the software that checks IDs and brings badges and checks, um, visitors against, um, databases and that. The next piece of that software that we're implementing is the emergency management piece, which will help us communicating in the event of an emergency situation, if we have to go on lockdown or some other, um, um, situation. So we did, uh, we had a staff-wide training on Friday where they're all, uh, they either have it on their phone or they have it on a, uh, uh, their, or a laptop or their laptop, so that alerts go off. Um, it allows them to check in as to where they are on campus. It also lets us take attendance because it's tied to our, um, to Skyword so that it has a list of all their rosters of students. So they can go in and say, here's all the kids that are in my class. If teachers have, um, happen to be in an area where they have other students with them, they can also take attendance and, and check that all these students are counted for. And then as a district, we can see a dashboard which will let us know like who's missing, who's on the counter for, we can kind of check that. So this is, um, a much better, much more robust system for these kinds of situations. That's the next step in fully implementing the emergency operation. So it was, it was a good test. Uh, we're not quite, we're at the point, we're still working out a couple of bugs with just making sure everyone is incorrectly. Um, but we will then have a, have a, have a fight, we will announce that will be our new system going forward, that when we have an announcement, that's how we'll be, um, operating through, through the Raptor application.
What, so where, once they're in the, there's like, Raptor has a separate attendance and some of the teachers get everyone, so they're in a situation where they just said, right?
You could search, you could search for students, you could, on a great level.
Whoever you have with you.
Yep, you got to count for.
That's perfect.
Going in, because obviously some teachers have, uh, have classes, have class rosters, but other teachers or other individuals like guidance counselors or other folks don't have a pool of students that they work with, but they might have at that particular moment. So they'll be able to go in and, you know, and dress home.
But even those teachers that have their class rosters, they'll have access to the all of it?
Oh, yeah, they have access to, yeah, to all, all students.
There's some situations where you're instructed, you just pull in whoever's in the room.
You can add that, if a student is not on your roster, you can add the student's name and then it.
And then that teacher will see that they're counted for and where they are.
Yeah, you are.
So it's a very robust.
I have a wanderer.
So, all right, I just wanted to share that one and I'll, uh, I'll turn the rest over to Matt.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Matt.
Um, so, uh, as top of your page, uh, we're, um, as, uh, as our system has been very difficult, I have found in the past, um, we are going to be moving forward with, uh, moving our school calendars to one calendar and one calendar. Currently, right now, we are dealing with four calendars between the whole district. And, um, I have, uh, had a couple of meetings with our school, which is the new place that we are going to be going through. Um, that is actually what our athletic department is using currently. So the interaction is already there. Um, but once we get this up and going, um, as a matter of fact, this morning I was, uh, informed that they have already, uh, got our elementary school program down and into a program. And within the next two to three weeks, we should have the facilities end of it all set up, ready to go for a green light. We'll be taking a group of us to, um, training for about a five-hour session. It won't be all at once, but it'll be a couple day, a couple times of, you know, two, one to two hour sessions. Um, and then once we are green light, everyone, the public, will see what we have at any one point in time of our facilities. And instead of having to go through calendar after calendar after calendar after calendar to try to find out who's doing what and what's doing where and everything else, we're going to be able to just go to one calendar. Um, and also at the end of the day, it's also going to save us a little bit of money. So, um, once, you know, the setup fee is a little bit more than, you know, an actual year cost, but once at the end of the day, we're going to be saving ourselves money. Um, anyone questions with that one? All right. Um, the next one is a little bit of, uh, the grounds and cost savings measures. Uh, I've been in contact with some vendors, um, both with our facilities, supplies being like our towels, rigs, dust mops, um, and our, um, very nice rugs that we have in our entrance rugs and things like that. Uh, I have found a company, uh, that is going to move forward, um, have go both, all of that plus our uniforms. And at the end of the day, it's going to be another cost savings part of, uh, the buildings and grounds. We're, uh, trying to get all the final details, uh, done, but we've been working vigorously to try to hopefully get this motion going by April 1st.
What's the name?
What was that?
The name of the company?
Senpass.
How much is the cost saving?
Um, right now, I'm, I'm gathering, it depends on which way we go with certain items, but I'm guessing seventy-five hundred dollars cost.
Oh man, give us the gout right off the top, huh?
She said the level, huh?
Lisa, did you get a chance to look at that? I haven't noticed you guys had that second page.
So, um, that's going to be, um, a nice, uh, helpful boost to the facilities and grounds thing. Um, and then, uh, lastly, there's a couple of small little tasks. Uh, I wanted to just touch back on, uh, problems that we had over Christmas break. We had a reheat coil that broke down on us. Um, but we have been very well, uh, at the, some people's blessings, I guess, is how I'd say it, is that we were able to fix it on premise. So, um, the, the job of, uh, Jan Brennan for fixing that, um, and doing such a great job to be able to get us up and running in a short amount of time, uh, cost effectively as possible, um, with time and material. Um, I do not have numbers for that currently. Um, I have not gotten the, the final billment, uh, payment on that, so, um, I might be able to have something by the end of next month for, for that. Um, and then let's see here, uh, this past, uh, Friday, we had, um, seven windows installed, um, brand-new windows on the east side of our building, um, on the lower, lower half of the, um, of buildings, uh, all the ones that could open and close. People were having problems with them, they were falling apart at the seams, they were becoming a safety issue. One lady actually opened up a window and it fell out. So, uh, this Friday, after sixteen weeks of waiting for windows to come in, I finally had them installed on Friday and we have brand-new windows. Huge safety, uh, thing for me and they look great. So if you get a chance and you're driving beside, driving behind the building and take a look, there are lower windows, um, you'll see them. They're bright and shiny right now.
Matt, I got a question for some stranger. Why am I, and Kevin, you may remember this as much as I do. I thought that when we did the referendum in, third, I thought we redid the windows. I thought, I thought that was one of those major pieces that was, that was going on before that we, that our windows were old, like some of the windows had been there since. It might have been, was it the referendum?
We did some pieces to it, but, uh, like, like when we redid the main entrance at the high school, like all the front windows were done, but we did not do all of the building. We've been doing it in chunks as time has gone on. So, so every year or every couple of years, um, we've been doing certain classrooms that that hadn't been addressed.
Okay.
It's an ongoing project for us. We're still, uh, we still have something to do, but we're in a much better place than we were back, you know, ten years ago, where some of those windows were original to them.
Right, because I, I, I remember the meetings that we had and with some of the things that we did, and I thought that we had put them in that referendum was, was we needed to replace the windows because the majority of the windows were almost the same age as the building were. And so I thought that we were, we were replacing all those windows because the other thing too is, but there was this whole big presentation about how much money we would save from our heating and electric, our heating bills or whatever, and air conditioning bills or whatever have you, because we had changed all of these windows out and stuff like that. So that, that was another piece of the savings that we were going to have in a rebate or something like that.
Well, and, I mean, it was just to replace all of them, we didn't have the funding back then to do it. So I think they were just very targeted in how they, how they did that. And we, and like I said, we, we know which ones need to be done still and we'll go through and continue to plan for that on an annual basis. We've got to do certain parts of the building, because as Matt mentioned, these were in particularly rough shape, so we wanted to make sure we prepared for this. I mean, Matt and I had a conversation back in August, I think, when he showed me, here's the part we're going to do. I was like, oh, great, it has, you know, it's actually in February where they actually they get done, see if they plan, really far ahead of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so like I said, I, I remember the conversation about the windows and stuff, and I was just always like, well, we need to get all those windows changed out, especially since the majority of them were almost the same time that the building was built. So, okay, thanks.
And then the, the last chunk that I have is that, uh, we had a secondary, um, PA installed in the field house area. Our current PA, well, our original PA system was basically just used for intern announcements, you know, the mic or for playing music or, um, for when we had, uh, games and stuff like that. Now we actually added a second chunk to that, which, uh, now allows for our main office to project their, uh, morning announcements or in case there's an urgency of any sort, they can actually hear what's going on because before we weren't able to hear anything in the field house here. So you, you could have been making an announcement over the PA and no one in the field house knew. So we have, we need that with, uh, having a new PA system added to the field house areas.
That was unfortunate, but it's one of the things we learned through the lockdown process this fall. Like we identified that was one of the areas that wasn't, wasn't clear and I think it was a decision with the last, with the referendum, but we probably did it in 2012 and we just wasn't connected and that was something that, you know, wasn't accomplished. So we, we, we have identified that. All right. Thank you.
I just have a, more of a procedural question. I went in today and printed out everything around lunchtime and now you dropped in a second page. At what time of day would you say you should be done doing that? So I know that I looked the final time, so I'm ready for this meeting.
I apologize, yeah, that, that was, it was a busy couple of days and so I, I had done some of it over the weekend and then Matt and I were just, uh, we're discussing like what we wanted to share with the board. Um, because it wasn't an actual item, we were just kind of sharing information. I did late the date, so I'll certainly, we're working on, you know, just communicating better and I'll make sure that I get it out there before, as part of the package originally.
Okay. I mean, I had looked yesterday and I don't think your pack I was dropped in there because I looked again this morning, then it was dropped in, so I, I just was wondering your timeframe.
Sure. No, I, I worked out, uh, some weeks are easier than others to get it in there, but I will make a concerted effort to get it in there, you know, hopefully when the meeting is all set up, right?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Board members, any other questions for Kevin or Matt in relationship to this? All right. Let's move forward. Let's go on to our item, uh, two B, approval of the hires. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, we have, uh, one, a new hire. Um, we, uh, had a situation where we had a late, um, resignation at the start of the school year and we've been working with staff, um, kind of covering that opening and we did, um, I think Ms. Brown is, is, uh, very dedicated to checking we can and just seeing if anybody happens to pop up. And in this particular, um, era we're in, people are actually looking to move at different points in time. So we actually found a very qualified math teacher that was interested in coming in. Um, he has, uh, he said he was, uh, joining us, so we have brought him on to replace, um, this schoolmaster position, which has been with us since.
So we'd like to make a motion.
Dr. Vito, I'd, um, like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Jason Sadowski as a high school math teacher for the 2022-2023 school.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Motion made, second.
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion has been made, seconded, any discussion? Are you seeing that all in favor with raise hand and/or aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Are you seeing that motion carries six to zero? All right, let's go on. So we have no resignations, correct, Mr. Robinson?
No resignations, yes.
All right, let's go on to our retired, uh, resignations?
Retirement.
I mean, retirements, I'm so sorry.
Yep, yep. We have two retirements that are coming up at the end of the school year. Um, Gary Casa, who is a long-time elementary school, um, special education aide, will retire at the end of the school year. And I, I normally don't bring, um, you know, support staff to the board, but, uh, because of the, of length of service, he is eligible for, uh, for retirement benefits, so, uh, I just make you aware of that. And so he is one, and then Laura Rathman, um, who is a teacher with us as our occupational therapist at the elementary school is also, um, retiring.
All right.
So then Gary is effective six eight as well.
Correct, yep.
All right, so, so, um, the, Ms. Walker, you see that part?
Yep.
All right. All right, would someone like to make a motion for the retirement of Laura Rathman?
Well, I, is this a time that I would say that I would like to talk about the letter provided or are we not having discussion about that before we approve this?
Make the motion first.
Make the motion, make the motion, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement of Laura Rathman as elementary occupational therapist effective six eight 2023.
All right, we have, um.
Separate?
Yeah, just, yeah, that's going to be separate. All right, motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any conversation?
There you go.
I know, but he was there talking, so I'm right.
Oh, yes, so, yeah, I'm so sorry. You know what? Is that one of our closed session items?
Well, it could be, if you wanted to discuss that in, in specific, we could.
Well, I mean, if there was specific questions, do any board members have any specific questions? Otherwise, we will need to take that one and that one need to go into closed session.
I have a phone for closed session.
All right.
Well, I, I see Ms. Rathman on there, so if she does decide to retire, let's say that, um, she, she was one of, that I appreciated, her, her work with the students. So like, if we come back in closed session and go to it, I want to acknowledge that her work here has been appreciated by the parents. She just really made the great time for my side.
Okay, yeah, so this, we know, we're going to approve the retirement, but I think there was another, uh, situation. So, okay, so let's, so we, I'm so sorry. Since we had made the motion, I think that we're going to need to, that one would need to be tabled until we come back out of closed session. All right? So let's, uh, so we'll move that one to closed session because there was a point of contention and discussion. So we'll move that into, into our closed session. All right, so let's, uh, talk about, uh, would someone like to make a motion for the retirement of Gary Casa?
I will make a motion to approve the retirement of Gary Casa as elementary aide effective six eight 2023.
All right. All right, motion has been made. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Motion made and seconded. Uh, any conversation or discussion? I would just like to say thank, uh, Gary for all of his years of service to the district and, and, and all that he brought to it and the love and the passion that he, he gave to all of our students and we wish him well in retirement. Uh, so all in favor, raise hand and/or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here in Seena, motion carries, uh, six to zero for the retirement of Gary Casa. All right, let's move forward to our item number three, engaged innovative staff. Uh, would that be Dr. Kelsey Brown?
Yes. Tonight we are looking for four, uh, the twenty-four, K four, K five through 12th grade calendars. This has been on the agenda for a couple of times already, um, and I, we're ready.
All right, so, so, Dr. Kelsey Brown. So now with this one right here, this draft right here that we have in place, now you've been able to sync everything together, right?
Very best we can.
For the best that you can.
Yes.
So now all of the calendars are synced together to be able to, the kindergarten one as well as K five through 12th grade.
Yes.
All right.
If you want to say, what would you?
Also, I mentioned it tomorrow, the village board meeting. So just an informational piece, the village is coming to ask if we, um, if they will be able to use the elementary school for voting in 2024. So that may cause a revision in the instructional calendar. What we'd like to propose is, um, a P O, have a P O day fall on the same day as voting so that it wouldn't be so much traffic in the buildings with the staff and the students.
So, I'm sorry, are they talking about using the elementary school?
Right.
So I guess my, now I go back to before, was that, was that last year or the year before that where they said that the elementary school wasn't big enough in order to be able to do, uh, be able to do the voting? And we went through this, we went through this whole big, long thing in relationship to our facilities and being able to use the vote.
Right, so it's not an agenda item tonight. I just wanted to, what's your appetite for what is going to come? Um, and I think a bigger discussion will occur tomorrow at the village board.
Right. So.
And then it will be a, so it could, it, it would be an agenda item for us, but it could precipitate the need to, for revision in the instructional calendar.
All right, so.
And we know it at the moment.
Would that be for more than one day though?
It would be, okay.
Yeah. So are they talking about the potential lead now this happening for all the elections? Or are they just talking about this election for this?
Let's find out more tomorrow. My guess is, that's, and moving forward.
Cause there's like four elections next year.
Yeah.
That's going to be a lot of shifting.
Okay.
We played out February, April, November, August.
All this year. Okay. So I guess, so when we make them, so now I think when we make the motion for this instructional calendar, there could potentially be some changes or whatever, but if there are some changes, those will be brought, brought up in front of the board so that we would know, uh, what's going on. All right. Then I guess the other last piece of that would be is, is that we are making those changes. I know that we had extra instructional days, uh, in, in our calendar to be able to do that. And will we be trying to replace that day since we were talking about the building being closed for the elections or for the elementary school? Will we be trying to replace those days?
I would just ask, but the way we're looking at it now, so we'll have more insight tomorrow of course, but what we're looking at is moving our, so our P O days are typically closer to the end of the month on a Friday. We would look at shifting P O day to, to the voting day. And I just think that's important to think about from a safety perspective in terms of what's happening in school buildings. We will not be in a position to manage all of that and our kids and our staff and all of, all of that. So I don't know which way we're going to go with it, but that's certainly, um, something to think about, but given that it's not an agenda item.
Right, we got to watch it. That would change all of the P O days to Tuesday, but just, you know.
With voting on Tuesday.
Tomorrow going to represent tomorrow, that may affect parents.
Not all of them, I think it would just be.
It's just only for the election days, that's all.
It's always to be two.
It's just, no, it's just the election days.
Yeah.
Just the election days.
Right, but she said there's four.
So there would be two in this calendar and then two on the next calendar.
Right, yeah. Okay, but we don't know as of yet or whatever have you, so Anita, uh, we'll just, that'll be part of the conversation for the joint meeting tomorrow on the agenda. Okay. All right, so with that being said, um, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the instructional calendars as presented?
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2023, 24, K four and K five through 12 instructional calendars.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Motion has been made, we got a second? Thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion has been made and seconded. Any other further conversation or discussion? Here you can see now, all in favor, raise hand and/or aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Here you can see now, motion carries six to zero. All right, so, uh, Ms. Rathman is actually on the line right now and she would like to share with us and so that wouldn't be an issue for the simple fact that she is on the agenda. All right? So what we're going to do is let Ms. Rathman, uh, pop in and give her a brief time to discuss, uh, her retirement and we'll use, we'll use the same thing that we use for public comment, three minutes.
Okay. Thank, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So thank you very much. I guess I just, I know I made a, um, request with my retirement, um, letter that is probably rather unusual just because of the time that I have spent here in Brown Deer. And I guess when you go to make a decision, um, I know that there's protocols in place and I know that Act 10 plays into this. Um, I've talked to a lot of other retirees, but I guess just given my longevity with the, uh, Brown Deer, I have serviced the kids since two thousand, or nineteen eighty-nine, ninety school year. So for a very long time, um, I wasn't hired until 2015, so I wasn't able to be eligible for, um, asking for insurance before Act 10. So I guess I'm just hoping that you can take that into consideration. Um, I guess, I mean, the only benefit that I know of would be to get, uh, insurance for 12 months and I guess that's what I'm, I'm asking, given my longevity with, with Brown Deer, um, that I, and it wasn't, I, I would have, if I could have been hired, and I guess that's what I'm, I'm asking, given my longevity with, with Brown Deer, um, that I, and it wasn't, I, I, I would have, if I could have been hired, I would have, but I know it wasn't until two thousand fifteen, so, um, I don't know if you need any other information from me or if I can say anything else, but, um, thank you for letting me speak.
Right, thank you very much, Ms. Raffman. Uh, that being said, uh, we'll take all of that into consideration and then we'll go into, uh, that'll be part of our discussion when we go into, uh, closed session.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's, uh, move forward to our item number four A, Neola Policy Revisions, first readings.
Here, right, that is, that is me. Good evening, um, we, uh, so we have a, an, a fully edited policy in front of you, um, or on, online here, and this is the, the revision of the, the twenty-five, twenty-two Learning Center Resources Policy. Um, this is a kind of a unique policy. This is actually the first policy that Neola and the D P I have collaborated on to, uh, to create uh, with, um, with library media centers and, um, and board's policy in mind. Um, what, uh, there is a, there is a climate, uh, where, um, we are finding that in our libraries, uh, the second school libraries, that we kind of need to tighten up and clarify, um, uh, uses in the event that, um, there's a situation or a challenge, and so the D P I and the board and the Neola Board had, uh, had gotten together, and this is one of the, the products of that. Um, the, uh, we've gone through the policy, basically, um, it starts out by identifying the purpose of what school libraries are for, and then I would, I would like to toot all of our horns and say, but oh, it's so much more. It, um, so it, um, identifies the purpose of school libraries, um, and, uh, and that, um, that this is a, um, you know, this is a, this policy and these, you know, the purpose of school libraries are in conjunction with a D P I, um, approved library plan, um, of which we have. Um, we are in need of updating it, um, according to the, uh, to the future ready planning, and that is, um, that is in the process. But, um, but what that does is that reemphasizes in our selection policies and our procedures, which means like, how do we go about uh, purchasing and selecting the items that appear, um, in our libraries? And so it also articulates, um, gifts and donations, um, sometimes, um, and, and it refers to our district policy, which is, uh, policy seventy-two thirty, which essentially says, um, we have the right to, um, to refuse or accept and decide where gifts go. Um, and, uh, and then it also then, and this is kind of the, the biggest piece that, um, that was focused on in the team, is, um, articulating, uh, what a reconsideration of school library materials policy looks like. And so, um, what it does is it is going to identify, um, processes and procedures, um, regarding complaints concerning, um, uh, library materials. Anything related to curriculum materials in textbooks are governed by a, a different policy, which is policy ninety-one thirty, um, and, and then has a, has a different, um, kind of process than that they use. So, um, so what, uh, we did in our discussions with, um, Stephen, um, from Neola is went through and we just started, we decided as a, as a, as a team that, um, we would go with option three, and what option three does is it looks at, um, again, and this is where we just really want to articulate the process that the people would go through. So what do they do when, you know, when they, when there is a, a request for reconsideration? And, um, they would then go through, they would identify, you know, that process. They would, um, say, I have a question or a concern. They direct that to the library media specialist. A library media specialist, because I'm the director, would then direct that toward me, and then we go through a formal process where we, and then that is outlined, um, in this policy. What a lot of, um, what the, the point in, in I, in kind of modifying this policy, are we articulating it in? Um, rearticulating it is because, um, there, given certain political climates and, and things like that, there is a, there is a request to, to ban, um, it could be items that relate to, um, L G B T Q Y A, it could be, um, you know, civil rights materials, anything dealing with race, ethnicity, gender, that's something that somebody would disagree with, and we, we have a, everyone has a right to, to question, but, um, but what it does for us is it provides a process for us to look at that material for them to request for consideration, why they would reconsider it, what part they might feel is potentially offensive or age inappropriate, and, um, and then what we would do is then it just, the policy then articulates that it's written out, um, it's read in its entirety, it's, um, there's a group of, of individuals, a team, and whatever that looks like is one that we will decide as a district. It would probably include myself, library media specialist, uh, principals, um, you know, and the like, so we, um, so to be determined, and, um, and then that material would then be evaluated based on the criteria, and we would make a decision. If the decision was to be kept into the library, what would happen is, um, they could appeal that decision to the board, and that's what that policy says. Um, the, uh, the, uh, the district administrator, which would be Dr. Brown, could then say, all right, there's a disagreement. The board would then evaluate, um, everything based on its content and then make a decision, um, should it get to that. Um, and then ultimately, um, if the, if the material is chosen to be removed, it would only be removed for a three-year time period, um, given the winds of change that happen, you know, in those, in those years. Um, and, uh, and then the other piece is that it articulates that the material will not be removed from the collection unless the district administrator deems it um, inappropriate, unoffensive, uh, or offensive, or of concern in terms of the population in which it serves. So, um, so it, uh, it does provide, um, students with certain rights in terms of those, the access to those materials, and, um, it also uh, provides just a system and a process through which, um, you know, uh, our librarians and our families can, can, can examine materials. So, um, the, uh, other piece that it does articulate is the criteria for the selection of the materials, and we just don't buy materials, you know, and we don't buy bestsellers, and we do that, but, um, but we do buy them based on reviews, um, kind of the material type, and what this policy helps us do is just articulate those pieces so everybody knows, um, why we purchase and how we purchase materials, um, for our libraries. And then it also articulates that parents do have access to rights of, um, to see what their children are checking out if they are under the age of sixteen. We and the library, even with our littles, um, they wanna know who has, um, you know, X, Y, and Z, the bestseller out, they won't return it, and they wanna know the name so they can go talk to them, even with littles, we protect their anonymity. So I can't tell you, but I can go talk to the students and see. So we do believe in kind of allowing students that, that privacy, um, but under the age of sixteen, parents have, this policy does say that parents have the right to see what their children are checking out, should they choose to do so. Um, over the age of sixteen, um, there is, um, anonymity unless it is a, a question of a criminal complaint or there's a police order through which they can access those, those library records. Um, and, and then the very last piece, it articulates our fines. Um, back when I first started twenty years ago, we actually charged late fines at five cents a day. Um, I got rid of that policy because that was a nightmare to collect, um, and it was just needless, so we don't, we don't, um, we don't charge fines for library books, um, unless it is, um, damaged, um, and, uh, and, and potentially loss of materials. So, um, so that's in accordance with our, um, with our, our board policy that we have revised in terms of student fees and fines. Um, we often tell our students and our families, I don't, I don't need your money, I would just like my book back. And, um, and even then, we are, um, we are blessed in this state with a common school trust fund that more than adequately, uh, provides for our libraries, so it is a very, very rare incident unless it's a damaged book that we, that we find families or charge families for lost materials. All right, so, um, so, yeah, so, um, if, uh, and if there was, uh, a fine, it might have been for curriculum materials, which is purchased through different funds, so I don't have control over, over curriculum materials, but, um, because that's a different pot of money. But, um, but yes, so, so that is the, the policy in its entirety. Are there any questions I can help you with?
I just wanna say thank you for your, your work and your, um, insight on all of this and your, um, you know, the transparency, you know, I understand with the C R T and all of that, that that has to be very challenging, and so putting a process in place is so important, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. I can tell you, I went to, um, uh, Wisconsin Educational Media Technology Association, so it's their, it's a librarian conference, and, um, there are, um, it is, it is a concern. We have, we have libraries in our area that are, you know, that are constantly under threat, and it just has become a full-time job for these librarians, and it is just absolutely heartbreaking, and I am so proud to represent Brown Deer. So, yeah, so, and, and it's a tribute to you.
Your, yes, when we stopped charging for lost books?
Um, so, um, so during COVID, so, yeah, so yes, I think after that, we just, because you had littles, or when your littles lost them, yeah. So, I, you know, so I, I think though, too, that I think, I remember some twenty years ago, and I would go to public library sales to buy books because we just had no books in our libraries. Like, I would go to garage sales, I'd go to the public libraries. It's the hearing Brown Deer just to get books on our shelves, and so, so now we're at a, at a point where, you know, we, through budget management, but also through common school funds and wise management of the trust funds from the Bureau of Land Affairs, you know, we have, we have, we have money, and so I think our goal is to get books in the hands of children, and that is, that is it, and so, um, and so we, you know, we don't, you know, we don't, we just let it go, so.
So, Ms. Turner, so you, you wanna go with option number three?
You wanna go with option?
I'm gonna go with option number three, uh, relationship to this, but then this, uh, first reading, and I guess my only other question thing is, is so now when seniors get ready to graduate, they have library fines, they won't stop, because I know before, if they had a fine, they had to pay the fine in order for them to graduate. So we're not doing that any longer. So, perfect, okay.
So if they have, they had, I don't have control, like, so textbooks and some of the curriculum books, um, so like through workshops and things like that, those also circulate through our libraries. We identify those as other resources though, so, um, so however the school handles those is kind of their business, but yes, library.
Only reason I say it is, is before my son graduated, he had a bill of a dollar eighty-five cents, so we had to pay the dollar eighty-five.
Was it for a library book?
Yeah. I was like, what are you talking about?
I apologize.
So I, I guess we should, I guess, uh, would have had, uh, option number three there, uh, some years ago. So can I get a refund? Thanks, thanks, Carl. Would someone like to be able to make a motion to approve the first reading?
I'll have one, one more question though. One of the things that I kind of did some research on is that list of, um, the C R T list, um, and it's kind of interesting because there are some books that have been out here for twenty-third years, you know, like The Bluest Eye, some of Toni Morrison's, and, um, kind of even Animal Farm is on that list, from what I understand. I mean, wow, which are all in our curriculum.
And, and I think that, like, and again, I, I just, I, I'm just horrified, you know, honestly, at like what some of our colleagues are going through, and, and again, I just say, I'm so blessed to have the board that we have and that the support that you've always shown us, and, and having autonomy to pick the curriculums and to select materials that, um, you know, one of our first initiatives was that, you know, students should be able to, to read and about and see themselves in the curriculum that, um, that they're learning about, and that's, you know, and that has always been one of our, our primary goals, and, and our babies should walk into our elementary school libraries and see books that, that look just like them and their families, and, you know, and so, so I think that, um, it is, and I think this is why we do this, because every individual has a right to, 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 you know, to, to question, and but then it's our right then to have a, a system and a process to, to develop an answer to, you know, in terms of a response, so, yeah. And sometimes we're not always gonna be on the other side of it, but that's okay, and that's what we do. We reconsider things and which is why we have that slayer limit, because if you look at some flipper issues, the winds are changing. And then we can, and we can move on from there.
Thank you. So would someone like to make a motion? I'm sorry, hold on, I'm sorry.
Who is, uh, the policy number to the motion, she, Neola?
Uh, Neola Policy Number?
Twenty-five, twenty-two.
Twenty-five, twenty-two? All right, Ms. Smith, do you have that?
Okay, I move to approve the first reading of the Neola recommendation, of the Neola recommended revisions to bylaws policy.
Twenty-five, twenty-two.
As presented.
All right, motion has been made. Do we have a second? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bacon. Motion has been made. Any further, uh, discussion or conversation? Here in Sina, all in favor will raise hand and or eye. Uh, any opposed? Here in Sina, motion carries six two zero. All right, good job, Carl. All right, so now let's go on to our, our next item is our board retreat, which will be February twenty-fifth at the A S C from nine to twelve o'clock. We'll be having hot breakfast that morning. Um, so I, I told my, put that in there, enough of these pastries. All right, so we'll be having, we'll be having hot breakfast that morning, so it's in the minutes.
Oh, you're, you're, you're.
No, 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 this, no, it'll be here for us when we get here. Um, and so, with that being said, also, uh, there is going to be, uh, a bunch of material for us for the, because we'll only be covering like three different items in the board retreat, and one of the major ones is going to be our data dive, all right? So there potentially could be about a hundred slides that'll be, uh, that'll be happening with that. So what again is, is, uh, you know, Dr. Brown, Dr. Glass, they'll be getting that information out to us, uh, prior to our meeting and stuff, so, but that being said, if you read through something, it was gonna end up in, are we doing it with a Google Doc? If there were any questions, so once you read through, if you have any questions, you'll be able to put your questions in the Google Doc. Make sure, so that way everybody can see the question, because some other people may have the same question, so that way we can kind of handle uh, some of those questions, and get some of those answers prior to our meeting, uh, for the simple fact, and we're talking about a hundred slides, we've got three hours to go through three, uh, different, uh, areas and stuff like that, and the data that we'll be discussing is actually two years' worth of data, not one. Okay, so just, uh, this, so, so again, so just for that purpose, uh, when the information comes, make sure, let's start making sure, uh, Dr. Kelsey Brown or Dr. Glass, do we know when you're gonna be able to send out? All right, so by the end of the week, so basically, let's just say this, by Saturday, start looking in your emails in relationship to the slides that'll be presented, uh, for the board retreat on the twenty-fifth, and, and being able to look at that information and stuff, and if there are some, uh, data points or information that you have or questions, uh, just go ahead and put that, and it'll be a Google Drive, that you'll be able to hit the link, the hyperlink, to be able to put that in there, and any questions in that way to go out to, uh, to go out to everyone and stuff, so we can make our process a little bit smoother, because like I said, four hundred slides for the data pieces, two years, kind of hard to get through all of that in, uh, in three hours.
We see a lot of trends over time in the, in the data sets as well, but by building, elementary school or middle school.
Right, and then the, the areas we'd be looking at would be, um, something like the literacy and the math, the behavior, enrollment attendance, looking at the Fast Ridge, Wisconsin Ford, um, and other, another, uh, assessment data and things of that nature and stuff like that, for the elementary school and the middle school as well as the high school for the next two years. Uh, Ms. Smith, do you have any questions? All right.
Dr. Peter, you said three items, so the second one is the advocacy better.
Right, and then, uh, first three was the, the data stuff, it was that, I thought we were talking about potentially some with the strategic plan. See, I just, I didn't know exactly from a timing standpoint, would we have enough time to be able to do that, so the, the items right now that we have on the agenda for that is the data dive, um, and the data dive and, uh, the letter that we're going to, the letter that we are going to compose, uh, to go to the legislature, legislation, all right? Remember we talked about we were gonna, we were gonna draft a letter as a board to be able to do that, and what happened is, is I'll start putting some things together, and then I'll actually, I have that as part of the package to be able to send out, and then that way we will be able to word smith that and kind of go through that letter, because it'll be a joint that I'll send it, but it'll be a letter from us, so everyone to have.
In our WASB, uh, no, sorry, S W S A meeting, I'll send it to you, because I think it could be helpful.
Okay, cool, because I know Dr. Kelsey Brown actually has a letter that was actually drafted as well to by superintendents, but it could be the same thing.
We're the same, so if you should already send to you, then you are.
Okay, so we'll do that, and again, this, this letter, this letter that we'll be drafting will be a collaborative of all of what we think of what we need to be able to do, all right? And so we'll just be able to do that. And so we'll just be able to do that. So that would be item number two. And then item number three is the strategic plan and being able for us to be able to talk a little bit more about the strategic plan. So we do have our two representatives that represent the board. And this, and I know that you have them to be able to, we're going to start giving us a report on kind of what was, what's been going on. So I know that there is going to be, so is there a strategic planning meeting right before?
After.
Oh, so it's going to be after?
Oh, it's the 25th, the next strategic planning session is February 27th.
But now we had one that was just.
January 30th.
Did you guys give us the report on the January 30th meeting?
No, that'll be at the end of this month.
So could we turn around and potentially have you guys present the information that you have from January 30th?
At the board meeting.
Mm-hmm. Can we do that? You guys got enough, do you guys think you got enough time to be able to give us a nice comprehensive?
What we've done so far, yes.
Okay. Ms. Bacon, you are sure? Good?
I'm like, she's excellent. Let me.
All right, cool. All right, so that would be our third item. And now remember, ladies, that, you know, again, it's our meeting is from nine to 12. So we've got three hours. So again, let's make sure that we read through, we've got certain questions or whatever have you. Let's get those out there and stuff so we can get some of those other answers. And so that we can, you know, we try to get through this thing seamlessly and painlessly as possible. All right. Questions for me?
Doesn't Donna create a, some, like a report or something that she does while she's there or no?
No, she, she doesn't. It means strategic planning, right?
As a strategic planning. No.
Oh, she's just, anyway.
She's a participant.
Right. Okay. All right, any other, any other questions in relationship to our board retreat? And I would say your suggestions for that venue for that day, send those to Dr. Kelsey Brown.
Oh, steak and lobster, steak and lobster.
Shrimp and grits, let's get it.
You got shrimp and grits, that's good.
All right.
Okay, okay.
All right, so now, all right.
Standard breakfast.
All right, so any other questions about board retreat?
Yes.
All right. So let's go to item number C, our WOSB Day at the Capitol in Madison, March 22nd, 2023.
Yes, so the information is out there and we just wanted to know if there were any board members who are interested in attending, so we can go ahead and register all the board members who are interested.
Let me ask you a question. Are you guys driving up to Madison?
Can we take that van? If we, if we, if we've got multiple individuals that want to go, can we take one of the vans?
If you're up, you have to go through consent and get all approved and get the permissions and all of that.
No, 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 no. I understand I was driving, I said, but could we put, could we put everybody on, there could be a, there isn't a driver who was, you know, whatever. But like for the rest of us, if we wanted to get in the van, like, and take that drive there or whatever, we would have to go through consensual and everything, just only the driver.
Correct. Who is actually the driver?
I, I was asking the question, could we even do it in the first place?
I think, I think we can as long as the driver is approved. I'm not going.
Do you have a C D O?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Of course.
The other question is making sure the van is available because.
Again, and then I guess the other, yeah. And then I guess the other piece too is, is how many board members are even talking about trying to go? So if we really don't, I was just thinking from the standpoint of, let's say that, you know, between board members and staff, we wanted to be able to do it, could we just jump in a van and do it rather than people trying to drive five or six different cars and go or whatever? So again, let's just say if individuals, for that 22nd, they wanted to do it or whatever, maybe if there's enough individuals, maybe we might be able to do something like that. And if not, we don't worry about it. Okay? Anything else in relationship to Dr.?
Are you deciding today or?
No, 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 no. That's, we've, we've got, we've got time.
So you want this to be a future agenda item?
You can, just to see if individuals want to be able to do it. And then we've got to register, right?
Correct.
Okay. When did they say the registration is due? Did they say?
I would have to look again, I don't know.
Look it up.
Okay. All right, anything further with the item C, Dr. Kelsey Brown? All right, let's go to item number D, closing the Achievement Gap Board Symposium on March the 9th. Would that be Dr. Kelsey Brown or would that be Dr. Glass?
That's me. So as you know, the Closing the Achievement Gap Consortium continues to provide professional development for stakeholders. Tomorrow is the Administrators Institute. So all of the district administrators, or majority of the district administrators, Kevin will be here. And building administrators will be at professional development tomorrow in conjunction with the Department of Public Instruction, continuing to look at our equity work. And then for the board, the board's equity presentation is scheduled for March 9th at six o'clock at Wildus Tussle West High School. And so we'd also be interested in knowing and understanding which board members are interested in attending the C A G C Board Symposium. Now, the, I think, or the, before, thank you, Dr. Peter before.
Yeah, we were in Wildus Tussle for that.
But needless to say, it is an opportunity for super, superintendents and board members to engage in professional development together. And we, there are currently 40 school districts that are part of the C A G C. And so many of them will be part of that on March 9th as well. So if you're sitting and attending, please feel free to let us know so we can register you for that as well. And that is free. And.
All right, I know. And you know what, I think that was like, that was the thing that when we first met Dr. Garrison as well too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they keep very well.
Yeah, real good.
If you're interested in attending, please.
I do have it on my calendar.
That's on mine as well too. Board members, just, you know, so if you do want to attend or whatever, let's send that information in. Do we, will we send it to you, Dr. Kelsey Brown, or would it go to Donna or?
Send it to Courtney.
Courtney, okay.
Donna's on leave.
I know, but I'm just saying, well, she should be, hopefully, fingers crossed, back before then.
I would send it to Courtney.
Okay. So board members, we'll say if you would like to be able to go to attend, send it to Courtney or request to Courtney and stuff for her to be able to re-register. So I would just say, Dr. Kelsey Brown, for me, if you could just already let, let her know that I'll get that.
I mean, if you tell me tonight, I can let her know. Well, you don't have.
You gonna put it on your note? Okay.
A board.
That's a yes for you?
Yes. So the symposium is the culmination of the, the training that, what, what will happen at the symposium?
No, it's, so there, there's a presenter who comes in and shares information regarding equity, looking at it at the board level. Courtney's working on the flyer right now, so I'll get the flyer out, out to you. But it's not, it's not a series of events that have led up to something.
But with your participation in the C A G C, you, you, you all go how often to those? Is it something? Can you, how applicable do you see these achievement gap issues for a district with our demographic?
Um, they're appropriate. They're, they're applicable. I think Dr. Vito and, so one year we had, wasn't Reggie Moore?
Jackson.
I mean, but.
Reggie Moore.
Reggie Jackson, yeah, he came.
Um, one year.
Not, not that going there and focusing on the achievement gap. I was just wondering what you're able to bring back from what you did there. Is it applicable to supporting our district achievement gap?
I think it's a great question. And the extension to that would be, what is the conversation we want to have?
Do we have our gap data?
At the board level to bring it back.
Can we bring, will we, at the retreat, will, can someone just speak on, since all the data will be there, what actually our gap would be in a, in a district with a demographic?
As far as what's happening forward is concerned.
Yes.
Can someone speak on that at the retreat?
Well. Right.
But why, why the data?
Right, I was going to say, Ms. Smith, I think you actually really should come, you should come, you should attend if at all possible. All board members, I would say, if you, if you.
I'm lucky to make it here. I would love to go, if it was during the day, I would definitely come.
But I would just say, from, from the times I'm born or whatever have you, it's informational, I think it's great information to be able to have. And then also, you also meet with other board members and other, from other districts and stuff like that. And it's, it's a great networking opportunity as well as to be able to get some of that data, things like that and information to be able to bring back. So yes.
And potential solutions. Well, my question, what are the other districts, some of the other, about five of the other districts that are participating?
All over.
That's five.
So Tulsa is obviously.
Tulsa, Big L, West Dallas, Wet Fish Bay. Um, I think, sure, what was it? I mean, not sure.
Nosa used to come. She, she did. Dr. Gallian has come.
But, and I did quite a bit of work on achievement gap in the early noughts. So I'm just saying that those are people who probably can, can identify a greater achievement gap if you're looking at the demographic in those districts. Our district is a bit down, so we have gaps and we need to elevate achievement. But I don't see it something into, you know, you know, there was a big, oh, achievement gap, achievement gap push, but with our demographics, we don't really have one. So if you've identified one, then I'd like to see that at the retreat. But I think that anywhere you can get tools that would elevate us universally, that would be great.
All right. So now with that being said, let's go on to our item number five, motion and roll call vote to go into closed session.
Dr. Vito, I would like to make a motion and roll call vote to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1C. The Board of Education may move into closed session for the purpose of discussing personal matters and discussing administrator contracts.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bacon. Motion has been made. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Motion has been made and seconded. Now we need to go into roll call vote. Ms. Robinson will be handling the roll call.
People?
Aye.
Amy is Ashley is absent. Bacon?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Close session is 7:15.
All right, so closed session starting at 7:15 P. M. We, we'll be coming back into open session. So individuals that are in attendance, you can stay on the line because we will be coming back into open session to, to vote. But again, we will, the, our audio and video will be off. And so you just need to stand tight if you'd like to be able, be able to. If not, enjoy the rest of the remainder of your evening and your Valentine's. Resident retirement of Laura Rathman.
I will make a motion to pro the retirement of Laura Rathman as elementary occupational therapist effective 6/8/2023.
All right, thank you very much. Motion has been made. We have a second? All right. Our motion has been made and seconded in the conversation or discussion. All in favor, raise hand and/or aye. Any opposed? Here it seems now, motion carries six to zero. We wish Miss Rathman, when her retirement happens in June, the best, the best of luck.
Okay, okay.
All right. All right, so. What score? All right. Okay, with that being said, was that the only thing we needed to come back in open session for?
Yeah.
All right. All right, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? All right, most of our, Ms. Smith has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Walker. All right, all right. Uh, all in favor, raise hand and/or aye. Any opposed? Here you see none. Uh, six, zero, we, this meeting is over with at 8:25 P. M. Thank you very much. Enjoy the remainder of your Valentine's evening and hopefully no one gets in that much trouble. All right, thank you, everybody. Enjoy yourselves.